We've got the record, perfect. Good evening everyone, thank you for taking time out of your schedules tonight. So we could start to unpack this upcoming indoor season, which as you all know, will quite a bit different than what we're used to seeing. So my name's Mark Wirsma and I work with the youth competitions team. And on the call with me tonight, we have our executive director, Joanne Lubicich, Alicia Lydams, our director of operations, Kerry Campbell, manager of indoor competitions, and Caitlin Malion, our youth competitions coordinator. So before we get started, I'd just like to go over a couple of housekeeping items. So we are recording this town hall, we'll be posting it on our website, guessing tomorrow at some point, next to all the other town hall recordings that we've done in the past. So feel free to pass it on to your fellow teammates or club members and parents. And secondly, we ask that everyone keeps their mic on muted for the duration of the entire call. If you have any questions, feel free to use the chat icon at the bottom center and just send a message to everyone and Caitlin will be managing those questions and then fielding them. Ideally, we'll be answering them throughout the question, throughout the presentation when it makes sense to do so. So with that being said, we'll get this thing started and I'll pass it over to Joanne for the intro.
Alright, thanks Mark. Good evening everyone, welcome. As Mark said, thanks for taking your time out tonight. We're happy to take another evening and share some more information in these crazy times. So I just, I really wanted to give a just a little, just a little preview around, this is obviously extremely challenging for the competitions team, for our whole volleyball community of how and what can we do across the province? As it's not the same conditions everywhere and facilities are limited. So just like all organizations are dealing with, we don't have, we don't have all the answers. But we want to start the conversation and we wanted to show the options tonight that the youth comp team has been working on. And we really wanted to, to thank the community and we have our IBDC, the indoor volleyball development committee, our regional presidents, their support and their ideas that they've been helping work with the youth competitions team on this. And I know some of you are on the call, so thank you for also that time and volunteering further to further our discussions. And so we just wanted to, I wanted to just share a little bit further as well with, we'll continue to monitor this indoor season, continue to have updates. As I said, the team doesn't have all the answers right now, but we will continue to look to a season like no other, as we've said. But it, it potentially could continue even after our traditional, the traditional indoor season would end. So that's something to keep in mind about, keep asking questions, sharing in the surveys that our youth comp team puts out, that's how they get a pulse of what's happening out in the communities across the province. And we also recognize that this isn't necessarily something that everyone in our community will want to participate in. So always remember that it's, it's a choice within your families, within your clubs and your teams of whether or not to participate and for some areas of the province, it'll make sense, others it will not. So, so just remember it's an individual season, an individual decision that across the season will just be very different than what we've ever seen. So I'll just let Kerry Campbell, our manager, jump into some of the details and what she's going to share tonight and keep the questions flowing in the chat and Caitlin will monitor that. And we'll continue to answer your questions through tonight. So thank you. Kerry, go for it.
Alright, again, thanks everybody for showing up and hopefully we can, you know, all work through this, this interesting time together and share some information here, so. So here's our agenda for today, we're going to welcome an introduction where we are in our, our current landscape within COVID in our clubs. I'm going to go over some reasons rationale why we need to change. Mark is going to share our survey findings with you guys, which we had a great response right on. We're going to go through some additional format details, why we chose a specific format and the outlook for Ontario championships and then we'll just follow up with any additional questions that may pop up. So without further ado, let's jump in here. So obviously as our, we've noticed that as our province goes through the second wave of this pandemic, it's, it became obvious that we needed to make change. And we needed to change our start time for January and the format for the, for the season. So that's what, again, this is what we're focusing on here. So the current landscape within Ontario is there's communities jumping in and out of zones and tiers of the Ontario framework. So there's always a bunch of movement there and fluidity within the province. We know that gathering size limitations are going to be around for the foreseeable future. And the best case scenario we're looking at is a 50 groupings of people indoors. And the worst case is kind of what some of us are experiencing right now is lockdown. We also have a lack of facility, facilities available, you know, schools are not permitting limitations on people who are facilities that are permitting. We also have to deal with comfort level of, of our community as a whole, like Joanne was commenting. Some people are going to be comfortable to play, some clubs are going to be comfortable to play and some are, and that's okay. That's absolutely okay, but we do have to take into that account. And right now, not all our clubs are registered and, or using MRS or re-registered at this point. And just a reminder about insurance, if you are practicing or training and you're not registered, there's some liability issues there. So we really encourage you guys to get registered with your teams and make sure that that's done. That also helps us with planning as well if we get to get these list league format going, knowing numbers of teams, it gives us a better jumping off point for, for that. So important to do. Okay, so why change? Well, as we all know, we need to follow the government and public health regulations, these are laws, you know, we have to. We need to adapt to keep our sport alive. We are one of the lucky sports that are permitted to play right now, so we want to make sure that we can continue to do that and get out there and play some ball. We need a fluid system where matches can take place wherever they can take place. You know, we can use different gym times, different dates and not be pigeonholed into one date every Saturday. We need a bit of flexibility there. And it's a part of our mandate as a PSO to deliver volleyball. So obviously that's what we want to do and fulfill that mandate, mandate. We want, through the survey, Mark will touch on this a little bit, 63% of our clubs do want a modified season. So they do want to move forward with some type of competition and that's great to hear. So you know, we want to make sure we're, we're addressing that and, you know, servicing the people, those 63% with this competition. And we are working with Volleyball Canada to keep all options open for Ontario championships and national championship modifications. So we're still got our fingers crossed, we're not giving up. You know, we want to make sure if we can offer something that we're doing it. And again, that takes a bit of flexibility and fluidity. So and it's important to note that obviously this changes day to day, week to week. So everything that we are presenting here is based on our current situation and they're, they are subject to change. So again, speaking to that flexibility within a system and it's sort of what we need right now. So Mark, with that being said, how about you take the reins here and let's chat about our survey results.
Sounds good. Thanks Kerry. So we recently sent out a survey to the club contacts to help us give an idea of where each club's at, because what we've realized through just some conversations, it's very different and which is, and what Kerry mentioned, which is totally fine. Some clubs are only practicing while other ones want some competition. So we want to kind of get a snapshot of where things are at. So from the survey, 76% of clubs responded, which is great to see. Our goal was to kind of get one response from each club and we probably will reach back to some of those just to make sure we have captured everyone's thoughts and feedback. So the survey covered a range of topics from gym availability, how often you practice, what's your average gym cost, are you interested in some type of competition in the new year? To what OCs could look like and then all the way into summer planning. So for this presentation, I just kind of stuck with a couple of the upcoming items specifically around the modified season in the next few months, as there's still a lot of questions, of course, for down the road. So we'll take that back and that'll help in our decisions moving forward. So this first, I just want to touch on, just from the previous slide, you probably noticed that 63% of clubs indicated that they would be interested in some form of modification or modified season. This is just based on all survey respondents. So you could, for example, have one club that had like 15 responses and all would be no or all would be yes. So that's why that 63% was slightly different because this 58% would be all responses together. And one just interesting note, just kind of compiled this earlier. We mentioned about gym time and gym availability and I know we reached out back in September and it was looking really iffy at that time, as in a good percentage of clubs had no gym time and it was looking really iffy. But I was really happy to see that 94% of the active clubs that responded have gym time and that gym time averaged out to just over two and a half hours per week per team, which was good to see, obviously not to what you guys normally would have. But good to see that the clubs have been able to get creative and find gym time as, as we all know, it's definitely not the easiest thing to do these days. Could you go to the next slide Kerry? I think you still have the power there. Perfect. And here is just two interesting pieces of information, which would help us kind of lean towards more of this league play format in terms of how far teams would be willing to travel. So it does look like most respondents in that just under our range would be comfortable with traveling around that distance. So Kerry will talk about this a little bit further, but that does kind of help weigh in towards more of geography focus. And of course, looking at competitive balance as well, but geography being a key, key piece that we'll be working with. And then this, the one on the right just talks about what your club would be willing to play in terms of the teams and what zone they're currently in. So it, it wasn't too surprising to see these results were green and yellow and everyone's fairly comfortable. Just so you guys know, the green line is comfortable, blue line is not comfortable and the pink line is undecided. So as we get down to the orange strip, you can see there's a little bit more uneasiness, I guess you could say, or a little bit more, a few more differences between the answers. So yeah, those were a few pieces of info and it was also on another side note, interesting to see even amongst clubs. I assumed at first that a club might have everyone on the same page, but it's actually, it makes sense now looking back at it, where you could have 15 responses from one club. Eight of the responses might have been, yes, we are fully on board for something and seven could have been no or not. So back to Kerry's point, it's every, it sounds like it might even be down to a team decision. If you're comfortable, great. If you're not, again, no worries at all. So yeah, Kerry, I'll pass it back on to you.
Sorry, Mark, there was just one question. Neil was asking how many clubs have practice facilities? He didn't catch that.
So out of this 70, like of, of the responses that we got, so that was 76% of clubs and 94% of the respondents said they had at least some form of practice. So some of those were pretty low in terms of only about an hour a week, but the average worked out to about two and a half hours per team per week.
Okay, thanks Mark. So you guys heard the word league, yeah. So that's what we're going to be trying to do here. So why a league format? A number of reasons, some of them being we need a short-term commitment with the ability to jump in and out of competition. So this is reflective of the, the, the changes that may be happening within your region, whether you're going from orange to yellow or, you know, red to lockdown, you know, hopefully that won't happen anymore. But we have to prepare for that. So we need a short-term commitment with the ability to jump in and out of competition, to register for what you, you can or what you want and maybe skip out when you can't. We need to keep our numbers within government specifications, so that's that magic number of 50. We need flexibility with gym times and team schedules. We need to minimize travel requirements for each team. We need to keep our costs down, everybody's feeling that pinch. And just a note, we, with that flexibility comes the possibility of actually pushing our, our season even later. So pushing it back and rescheduling, there's just a lot of flexibility within that type of league structure. So that's why, that's what we thought was key for our modifications this year or next year. So this is what we came up with. So just one second here, I need to fix my screen. So the OVA league play will be open to teams who reside in the prevent, green, restrict and orange zones. Members who live in the red, sorry, to prevent green, so that's green, yellow, orange. I think that's everything. Members who live in the red are control zone, but are a part of a, a green, orange, yellow team may not take part in league play. So that's consistent with what we're doing right now. Obvious reasons. So, and we are looking at introducing three ways of competition that are three weeks long with a two area, two-week washout period in between. Again, during the washout period, we highly recommend that each team refrains from scrimmages outside their cohort. And we also recommend scrimmages and outside your league not take place during your, your three-week in-league play. So these are the proposed dates that we're looking at. A provincial wave that starts on January 30th goes to February 19th. A challenge wave that goes from March 6th to March 26th. And a McGregor wave which goes to April 10th to April 30th. So these are our three-week periods that we would have competition. And again, just to note, there's potential to push the modified season later depending on the COVID landscape. So again, so this would be just pushing these three waves down and then we'd go further possibly into May. And then if that, if that's needed. So what is this league going to look like? So we're going to ask teams to register for a wave and then you'll be split into groups of four based on your location, age group and gender. So we're looking at each wave, you're playing against four different teams. Or sorry, three different teams, four teams total. Geography will be used as a primary factor to assign teams into their cohorts. We will be taking account skill level and that buzzword, you know, meaningful competition is really important to us. And we're not going to forget about it, but we will be keeping an eye on that geography just because we need to minimize travel and make sure everybody stays safe. So once you register for a cohort and Mark and Caitlin work their magic and split everybody into two groupings of four, you're going to get an email welcoming you to the group. And in that email, you're going to have contact information for each person in your group. And then you have three weeks to play your total round robin matches, so six matches in total. So we're asking these groups of four to do their scheduling. This touches on our issue with facilities and booking that full-day facility, which we know is, is impossible right now. So this, these, you booking your facility allows you to schedule your match with work specs for your training and you know, your training and your schedule. So gets evenings opened, you know, two-hour slots, three-hour slots, opens all that up. So, oh, here we go. So each cohort makes their own schedule and can play games at times and locations that fit within their playing and training schedule. So you can throw in a game instead of a practice time. Again, this type of scheduling addresses the issues of permit availability. We did look at other sports as well that do offer something like this and it seems to be very, very easy, very flexible. And it's just a matter of reaching out and saying, let's schedule a, a match here. So teams will work with the OVA local assigners to book referees for their match. So we still want to offer that to you as well. So the, all this information will be included in this welcome email and also our website, once we're able to get it up and going. So due to the flexibility required to run a league during the pandemic, each division and cohort may be split slightly differently and require different considerations. But skill level will be taken into consideration with creating combinations for smaller divisions. So we know that good example of this might be our 17 and 18-year boys. We are looking at, you know, maybe 20 teams for each of those on a, on a regular season. And for them to play locally, it's really tough because they're all spread out. So we might need to combine a couple of age divisions to reach some of our goals. Okay, so score reporting and and all that other good stuff. So the winning teams will be responsible for submitting, submitting results to the OVA after each match within the wave. And we're going to ask that again, that you copy all coaches on the email and a picture of the score sheet. Then we'll record the matches and we'll be using these results to aid in future scheduling. So if after each wave and there's a reshuffle, then we're going to look at your results from your previous league play and then use that to find you the right competition. I don't know if I mentioned that, but I should have mentioned that each wave is looked at independently. So you don't have to compete in each of the waves. You can choose one that works best for your team, you can play in all three, you can play in two, you can play in one. So there is flexibility built in there. But if we can use results to find you better competition, then that's what we're going to do and that's why we are collecting the results. Obviously, standard OVA tiebreaker procedures will be used for ties. And again, after each wave is complete, we will reshuffle teams within each region and the cycle will repeat. So we'll enter the next wave and take everybody who's registered for there and shuffle them again. Just to note, soft uniforms will apply for each of these. So I know that's a big issue for a lot of clubs, it's a big expenditure, kind of uncertain of the season. And we understand that if you're unable to get those brand-new spanking jerseys, then we can go from there. It's soft uniform, you're good to go. So the cost, the bottom line. So, so our estimated cost for these competitions would be $2.75 if you're in an age division that's playing two, three, or $3.60 for matches that are playing three of five. We are hoping to run three of five for our older, older kids and then two or three for the younger ones. And what's included in your fee, we're going to pay for your gym time and we'll pay up to 90 minutes of your permit for two out of three. We will be paying, paying, sorry, for 120 minutes for a, a three out of five. We will pay for an official fee, one per match. Obviously, we're going to be helping you administer these, these tournaments and league. And we'll also be giving you a kit. So this will be included, your hand sanitizer, your score sheets, your line of cards, anything along that lines. And as a bonus, we'll be providing the first 250 teams to register with NBA ball that have a little miles behind it, but it's still great. So that's what's included in your, in your costs here. Okay. Now we're looking at the outlook for Ontario championships or spring championships. So yeah, we all know festival-style Ontario championships will not be permitted for 2021. It was sad to say, but we, we were, we understand that. There will be no Ontario championship winners for 2021. Instead, we'll recognize a spring or early summer champions. We will be pushing the indoor season into spring, early summer. And there are in negotiations with Rim Park and Paramount Fine Food Center to adjust potential dates. And we are working with BC for nationals adjustments as well. So, and this is, it should also be said that we're also looking into the possibility of running other programming in the summer for indoor as well. We're hoping that permits will begin to open up as we progress. And then if we can get some type of programming running again for the, the summer, we, we are looking to do that. Our goal for the spring/summer championship is to offer a wave, a wrap-up for the teams that have participated in our league. So it's just something like a, a little ending, a little, you know, little cherry on top, if you will. So the eligibility, eligibility requirements for the spring/summer championships will be determined at a later time. We don't want to limit anybody from participating in this. We understand that there's going to be issues surrounding, you know, zones and player eligibility and all that kind of stuff. So we, we do want to be flexible with that, but we're going to hammer that down a little bit later. And the spring championships will be hosted by us, which includes medals and other types of team and athlete recognition. So that's kind of what we're looking at for spring championships for 2021, spring/summer championships. So still lots of questions, but you know, we'll get there. There's hopefully lots of movement forward through this pandemic and opening up. So once we see how it's going, we'll be able to answer some of those questions. So yeah, at this time, there are still many unknowns as to what the spring/summer will bring. However, we're, we're committed to delivering volleyball to our community. We want to make sure that if there's an opportunity to play, that we're helping it out, we're facilitating it, we're running it. You know, we, we want our sport to, to make it through this and come out on the other end. So we will be looking for more updates early next year. So I'm sure we'll stay tuned for those and yeah, we'll shed some more light on this stuff. So next steps with the league. So we want to create a general email blast to our club presidents. So this is going to be a lot of, this presentation was just kind of like a brush stroke. It was just kind of like an overview of what we want to do. And then we'll be coming up with more definite, you know, details. And we'll send that out to our club presidents, make sure they know what's going on, then we'll post it to our members. We'll be updating our website with all this information and what it's going to look like. We'll be creating a modified season manual, so you kind of, you guys have something to refer to and, and understand how to do things and, you know, making sure that everybody's in the know. And yeah, it's just another, our request to make sure that clubs get their teams registered in MRS, not only for insurance, but to help us plan, super important for that. And again, we're continually working on a modified spring/summer championship model with more information to come to the membership in 2021. So that's our next steps. So pretty big steps, but we could do it, you know, I'm confident in our team here. So with that, I guess we will go through any questions that Caitlin has, I'm sure there are a ton.
There are a lot of questions.
Okay.
I'm trying to answer them all at once and Alicia's helping me, but I do have some questions for you guys, maybe Mark can touch on this. There was a lot of questions about facilities and quality of facility. Can you just let everybody know what we're looking for, single gym, triple gym, you know, spaces, all that fun stuff?
Sounds good. That's one of the nice things with this type of format is the flexibility that we have. As you all know, the traditional nine-team on three court, where we're always like three court facilities or even four. And there are lots of times, single gyms or double gyms that we couldn't use. So in this case, really the way we see it is whatever you're using as a practice space. So obviously you need the single gym. And one other option, if for example, let's say you're in a group of four, one of the teams has access to a facility for an entire day on a Saturday, well, you could technically do all six matches in that round robin cycle all in one day. And to kind of touch on the quality of venue, so kind of the way we see it is when the four team managers have that first conversation, if they all just talk about what their current venue situation is, what venues do they have access to? And then go from there. So if there is one venue with, that has much better spacing for serving and all that kind of stuff, then I would recommend going towards that club's venue, since the OVA is paying for the cost. So there's nothing of hindrance there for the club. And then you can go with that one. But in terms of an exact measurement for serving, it's, it's very relaxed from our perspective, since gyms are so limited.
Another one here, we are moving into winter, crazy snowstorms and stuff like that. Do we have a policy in place right now for canceling because of weather?
Yes, since we don't have a set date for any of these competitions in, in a wave. I would recommend that there's, we would look into. To your situation, if there was a no refund policy with that, that book time, things like that. But we were hoping that there would be the flexibility to know that. Something's coming up. So let's move this to Friday night instead of Thursday night. So, yeah.
Is there a max amount that's going to be reimbursed for permits?
We. Obviously, we did a survey and on our survey, we did ask for the, for the max for your, your gym costs. And we did take an average of that when coming up with our, our. Our, our number. If there is, obviously, if we get a, we are going to. Ask for our documentation. When submitting your, your fees. So if something's astronomically high, we might have a few questions, but we understand that, that gyms are at a premium right now. So. Right now, there is no max.
Another question that came up quite a few times is. Memberships. Do athletes need full memberships or can they be registered as a recreational player?
They need full memberships for any type of OVA events.
Perfect. I might have missed a question or two. I know there's more questions coming in. What is the OVA position on athletes from lockdown zones practicing on teams in other zones?
If you're in lockdown, you should be in lockdown, unfortunately. So. Stay home, stay safe. Wait it out and we'll be out of this if we all just pitch in and make sure we do our part.
One other question, sorry Caitlin, just jumping in here. I think one was earlier. It was talking about our teams moving up and down, or can we play everyone and not worry about standings? So this is something that, that's very different this year from what you're used to as points are usually treated like gold typically. But here we, we won't have an official rankings per se after each event. We're just strictly keeping track of scores to help. Give better competitive balance for future waves. And that's really. All that we're using the, the results for. So there's no like premier trillium labeling anymore under this concept.
Yeah, we're, again, geography will be a, a big factor in determining. Our groupings. Obviously, for the, for the reasons that we, we mentioned. So we are going to try to play and then play with the groupings a bit to make sure that we are making sure everybody's getting. A meaningful competition. We, we know that if you get beat fifteen, twenty-five, one, that's no fun for anybody. So we want to make sure that these competitions are still quality and meaningful.
Can you just go over quickly the responsibilities of the hosting team? Which, by the way, won't be the same team for every single match. It could be, everybody has a turn hosting, but.
Right. So obviously, your responsibilities for being a host would be really, really. What's the word I'm looking for? Abbreviated version of a traditional tournament. It would be ideal, once you're, you have scheduled or a date for your event. I would urge everybody to contact your assigner right away and make sure you can get an official for that match. So that's covered off. And then again, the assignment of the, the duties could be just, you know, open communication with whoever you're dealing with. When we come up with our manual, we, we will come up with recommendations of who could do what. But really, right now, it's, you know, just working with your. The four teams within your cohort. And you just put up your posters. So in these kits, you're going to get, obviously, enter at own risks, all the Rowan's Law concussion. Work. You're going to get your score sheets, you're going to get your lineup cards. So you just be making sure that's at your venue. Ready for your competition. You're going to have your ball cleaner, you're going to have your game ball. So that'll be all set. And then you play. And then once the winning team is decided. They'll email the scores to us, copy your competitor, and then we can work on our. You know, tallying those. And, and then, yeah, then you're on to your next match.
And just one note to add, Carrie, with every venue, and I'm sure everyone on the call has found this. Every venue can have their own specific rules themselves too, which is, it's. A lot of times quite a bit stricter than the government rules. So it would be of the responsibility for the team managers. To kind of give the breakdown of what your specific venue rules are, just so the team that's visiting is aware of what they may be responsible for. As they enter.
Registration deadline.
Right. So right now, we're looking at, I think, would you say three weeks? What was our first one? Janu-, we were looking at a January ninth date for our first wave. And then, and going for there. So. Again, that's. January ninth, fingers crossed that, you know, things are, are not ballooning, that we are either maintaining or shrinking in our COVID numbers. So, and then. That's what we're looking at for our first wave. I can't remember the rest of the deadlines. But I, Caitlin, you know the deadlines, three weeks?
I think it's three weeks.
Three weeks, yes.
Okay, I don't know who wants to answer this one. Does the OVA have a damage control strategy in place? For the situation where a team or a league gets identified as having an outbreak or being a spreader of it?
Right. Well, I'm happy to say that we've had very limited issues with that even throughout our. Our season so far. And masks, masks will be mandatory again. So. Alicia, you're probably the best person to talk to about the risk management and control strategy if we were to have an outbreak.
Yeah, no, for sure. So we would work with the clubs. Obviously, if any media contacts them, we can do it on behalf of the club just to talk about the strategies and. The risk management we have in place for all of our return to play protocols, as well as our event hosting guidelines. The amount like Carrie already, you know, hit the nail on the head with the mandatory mask usage. That is really helping us when it comes to playing our sport again. But once again, there's an inherent risk in. With regards to COVID. So, you know, we just have to keep doing what we do and making sure that. We have, we're following all the risk mitigation to show that, you know, yes, there may be an outbreak, but we followed all of these steps. So anything else from your perspective?
Yeah, the other thing, that's absolutely, it's. Exactly what would happen along with, I just wanted to add the piece of, we work closely with the public health. So there's. Any questions that the local public health would have, we take them through our return to play protocol. And also if there was any concerns there, then, then we would deal with it. So that's just the other piece. And so if you are also just even. Outside of a competition, if you have any questions from your local public health, please send them our way and we're happy to help. And be a resource for that as well.
Perfect. Another question that are coming up are the COVID protocols that we're putting in place for these tournaments. So other than wearing masks. The whole time, will there be temperature checks? Will there be daily screening? The host, are they going to have to check all this stuff? Want to run down on that?
Oh, sorry. I thought Alicia was going to say something. Yeah, you know, obviously, these are all a part of our return to play protocols and we're going to follow them. We're part of. The whole, you know, us helping out and facilitating is we are going to help with these as well. We're not going to just throw this stuff out to everybody and say, okay, everybody, you deal with it. Of, of course not. We are here to assist with our daily health screening. We are here to. Assist with, you know, primes, cleaning surprise, supply. So every. Return to play protocol that's in those documents, we will follow and we will help facilitate everybody who's out there participating in our leagues.
And another one is, if you are in a red zone or a lockdown gray zone. You still want to be included in fingers crossed that you can get into the first wave or second wave. Can you register for that wave? With the hopes of being out of red and gray zone? Or should you not register until you are out of the red zone?
I would encourage you to register if you don't know. When Mark and Caitlin are masters at creating splits and they're going to be able to identify those red and gray zone teams really well. So we'd rather have you in and. Than miss out on an opportunity.
A lot of these questions kind of correlate to each other. So hopefully, we answered them all. Do we have any more questions? I see Tammy, you have a question about uniforms, with the stop uniform rule.
Yeah.
Oh, here we go. Penalties to un-register or register after the deadline?
Like penalties as a late registration fee or is?
Will there be any late registration fees? Yeah.
We hope everybody can get in after the deadline. I imagine if we email Kate and Mark and if you guys get. Caught up and missed a deadline, we'll try to accommodate you as best as you can, as best as we can.
Are there spectators allowed?
It depends on your facility rules. You're not, you're not going over your, your fifty, obviously. It's a little different than a friendly where we had no spectators because we were bringing together three teams, but. Definitely that depends on the facility, making sure that you're not going over your facility regulations.
Okay, does the four teams cohort follow the fifty people rule in a cohort league?
Yeah, that's why we're, we're limiting it to four. Yeah.
Carrie, can you speak to the different age groups of who would be playing two out of three or versus three to five?
Yep. So our seventeen and eighteen years will be playing the, the three out of fives where the. Everybody else will be got two out of threes.
If your team is in green zone, but you're in red zone. Can you still participate and play? Not lockdown, but red.
No.
Yes, players need to be fully registered. Coaches don't count in the fifty person league, assuming there's twelve people on a team.
Coaches count. Once again, that depends on facility. Yeah. So in the earlier stages of the government regulations, they said team staff did not count. They've actually taken that wording out in the. Like the most recent regulations, a rule of thumb, count them. But also confirm with your facilities, because once we're, once again, we're finding from community to community that facilities have different rules and regulations approved by the public health units and government. To kind of operate outside of some of the regulations. So even some red zone facilities that are supposed to have ten are actually have approval to have more than. Ten in the facility with different rooms and so forth. So once again, always check in with your facility. From everything, from coaching staff to spectators, because they really will dictate what you can and can't do.
Yeah. So and just to clarify too, with that piece, then, then there's also the league is the participants. And that's fifty and that's the athletes. So there's fifty allowed at the indoors out of facility, and that includes everybody for most facilities. But then in, when Carrie's putting together the four teams that participate, that's the total of the fifty for the league. Number. Participants. So it's just a little, two different fifties.
If the teams agree within, can younger teens play three out of five instead of two out of three?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll take your result from the two out of three and we'll pay for the ninety minute gym time, but.
So anything after the ninety minutes?
Yeah.
Is on the clock.
And the official would just be for the, the two out of three.
If COVID numbers continue to grow, will there be a point in which you call it a season or will you continue to push out dates?
Um, you know, that's a great question. I think we're going to keep continuing to, to try to modify and play, play volleyball. As long as we have some, some. Areas in the province that are not in lockdown. You know, our goal is to play volleyball. It's a mandate of our organization. We want to, we've proven that we can play it safely. We have proven that, you know, we, I don't want to pat ourselves on the back, but I do feel like we're, we're one of the leading organizations. When it comes to this, and I feel like we're doing everything right. And if we continue to do this and deliver sports safely. And we have green zones that we can, green and yellow and orange zones that we can do it, then yeah, I would like to think that we're still going to play volleyball.
Mark, there's some conversations going along in the chat just about team sizes. Can you speak to some of the stats of how we're staying within the fifty with four teams? Just about your average team size based on our. Obviously, review of all of our teams historically last year and this year as well.
For sure. So based on that. Stat that you're talking about is just under an average of eleven players per team. But as Joe mentioned, with this league format, only athletes count towards. The fifty. So assuming, based on our stats last year, it was. Very rare to have thirteen or fourteen, even though technically you could. And then based on your average was ten point seven or ten point eight, I believe. So we should be staying under that fifty. And the, the main difference here is, for example, when we had the friendlies, that was three teams all at the venue at the exact same time. So that's why we had to count the coaches and the players all together. But since. Here, the majority of these will just be taking place one practice time with two teams. Then you should be good with the venue limits.
All right, Kelvin had a question about referees balking out appreciating the non-counting game. They probably will. And they may not. So realistically, when we put the budget together, we budgeted for three state, three straight matches for the two out of three matches, just to pay the rap. So. The teams could always play the three straight. If there is an appetite for ever in a play three to five that all age groups, then we would just have to look at the cost. To make sure that we have enough to pay for the referee fees to be there for a three out of five. All right, there's a question about yellow area teams that have red area players. Are they allowed to play in the matches? So unfortunately, no.
League format, play each other twice or once?
Once. Round robin.
Yeah. So just to clarify then, so once you're co-horted into your four teams, you all play one match against each other. Once all of those results are in. Your teams would have to like proceed and register for the next wave and then you're re-co-horted with a different, like four teams. So you play each of those teams once in that league to get the results to send into the OVA staff.
I'm not sure if any of you can talk to Team Ontario. But there's Team Ontario question, assuming a program will run in twenty-one, will players have to participate in the league?
No, nobody has to participate in the league. Yeah, it's. Team, we don't have any. Mandatory participation rules for this. Team Ontario or, you know, regular club ball.
The league fee is per wave. As well, there was another question that just came up, if that league fee would be per match or per wave. So the overall, when you register, that's for all of the matches that are taking place. In that cohort.
Okay, another question. Will the league results impact seeding and ranking twenty-one and twenty-two, assuming that it's a regular season?
No, these are standalones. The, the results that we are, we'll be tallying. No, these are standalones. The, the results that we are, we'll be tallying and keeping track of are for, um, our reshuffles.
Um, so clubs determine who hosts game within the wave?
Yes.
Yep. Do all matches need to be played at the same venue or same, with the same host?
No, absolutely not. So, um, within your grouping of four, you're gonna have six games to play. Um, and they could be at a different venue, um, each time. Um, they could be a different day each time. Or Mark's, like Mark said, if you're able to get, um, three teams together for one day, then you can play those matches. Um, so yeah, it's, doesn't have to be the same person. It, um, just, this speaks to the whole flexibility portion. Um, I know that, um, we, we really encountered this when we were trying to work with our friendlies. The availability of gyms for one day on a, it's really tough to find and the price is astronomical. So we wanted to be able to create a program that is very flexible and works with teams. Um, their training times, their available locations, so it can, it's really up to the group on where they're able to complete their matches.
Is there currently a working or tentative date for the summer championship?
No.
Uh, so right now, we're in conversation with Rim Park and Paramount Fine Food Center to see, um, if they have availability, obviously later in like May or June. Um, we've also been in conversation, uh, with Volleyball Canada about some of their national championships and what they're planning on doing, if they're moving the dates or not. Kind of all options are open at this point from a, like a VC standpoint. Um, some more information should be coming down the pipe for all of us with that. Um, so ideally, when we originally talked about it, we would hope by like May or June, we could have something. Um, depending on what the season looks like and as long as our case numbers start going down and we can have the matches taking place, we can try and get that wrapped up, not to conflict, but, um, if there's an opportunity. Um, and I know in the survey, we saw that, Mark, I don't, I can't remember the percentage off the top of my head, but it was very, very high agreement with all of the clubs across the board of trying to get the season into the summer months, just to get some indoor volleyball going. Um, so yeah, so right now, Sean, no, there isn't a solidified date for any championship type event. Um, once again, I'm waiting to hear back from the venues to see what availability there is.
Um, will there be two officials for seventeen U and eighteen U?
Unfortunately, no.
Um, once the three matches are complete, can we play the same teams again in friendly matches while we wait for the next wave?
Um, absolutely. If it's a part of your, uh, new gym time and you know, you found a team that really pushes you, absolutely. Um, again, when you're in your wave and you're playing, we're gonna ask that you stay within that grouping of four, that you don't, uh, branch out and, you know, uh, play other teams. So if you have opportunity, uh, to play that team again, go for it, absolutely. We will count one match only for your rankings.
If a team does not have any permits, can they register for league play?
Absolutely. Um, we're hoping that, um, you can work together with your grouping of four and, um, you can make sure that you're, you're still finding a, a good time to play. Um, so yeah, absolutely no problem.
I can speak to this, uh, uh, permits question. So a question came in, if a team does not have permits, can they register for league play? Uh, yep, they absolutely can. Uh, and what we're hoping there, obviously, this might become a case by case scenario. Um, but hopefully two or three other teams have, uh, venue available that you can use.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
I'm blaming his baby brain for that.
Carrie just answered that. Um, if someone is test positive after the league play, what needs to happen with the four teams?
Like, um, an, an athlete test, go ahead, Joe.
I was gonna say, do you want me to answer that one?
Yeah, go for it. I was.
Yeah, this is where, um, it'll be checking with your local public health. Um, because they, as soon as there's a, um, a positive case, they manage all of the contact tracing. I mean, obviously, you have to provide that information to them. Um, but they will be, they take the lead on that. Um, for what we're finding in most of the areas, because the athletes are wearing masks, um, and in these situations where it has come up, um, then the athletes are in the self-monitor, not a self-isolation or quarantine situation. So it means that they can still go to school. It means that, uh, they just monitor themselves for any symptoms and obviously continue to be careful. But it will be, um, all directed by that local public health.
And yeah, we do ask that they, um, also let the OVA know. We track that as well.
Okay, so I think that, just kidding. Um, do you monitor the clubs in color zones? Do you have a map of where registered clubs are located?
Um, we don't have a map, but we do monitor it. Um, we watch our registration. Um, Mark, what's our stat on that?
It's listed on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the, um, public health units per each community are listed on the website.
Yep.
Um, here's.
Yeah, so sorry, just to expand on that, um, I think it was Tammy. Yeah, when you go to the OVA website, there's a lot of information on COVID everywhere now. But, um, once you click on the big gray box on the home screen, um, on the very first page there, there's a little, uh, tab that comes up and it's listed regions. If you click on that, it actually has all of the, the regions and what area is in lockdown, controlled, restrict, uh, protect and prevent. So you can actually see there, based on the name of the public health units, where the clubs would fall.
What would be the max travel distance for the league?
Oh, that's, that's great. Um, great question. We, I would imagine maximum an hour. Would you say that, Mark? Caitlin?
Yeah, it's, it's so tough to say is, cause each one of these, kind of like each, each division and gender is gonna be kind of a case by case. Each one's gonna be very different and we're gonna be working our best. And there might be some really wonky scenarios. And in that case, it might just be a matter of Caitlin or I reaching out to the teams in that potential scenario and be like, hey, this is, this is what our options are. What do you think? Kind of thing. But yeah, we're definitely, our goal is to keep it low.
Um, we mentioned pushing the season a little bit into the summer. Um, so I got a question here talking about a lot of beach athletes also play indoor. So how do we anticipate a beach season will integrate with the summer indoor season? Our hopes are that we don't go fully into August?
Yes. You know, um, we want to be able to offer programming. Um, you know, yes, lots of athletes, um, play beach. These aren't mandatory events. You're not, um, you know, gearing up towards a national championship. Um, you know, hopefully your, your team has some flexibility of what you want to do. And hopefully we're at a point where we don't have to, uh, worry about bubbles and crossing and cohorts and, and that. So, um, you know, the option will be there for people who want to play indoor. And, um, the option will still be there for people who want to play, play beach again. Um, these events are standalone events. You're, we're not gearing you up towards any type of, um, championship.
Perfect. So I think that's all the questions that I can see. Um, just as another one comes in, how will you manage a club that is in a red zone community, but practices in a facility outside that zone, but in a zone that is in a community in a different color?
Um, so I don't know, Alicia or Joe, they're the, the masters of these questions.
Well, as we're following right now, if you're a red zone, we're not gonna mix you and intermingle you with another, uh, team. But, I mean, if you have found somewhere to train, then.
Great, yeah.
There's no rule that says you can't, um, go and, if that facility is allowing your teams to go in there. Oh, but the OVA won't, um, intermingle you with the teams.
Okay, I think now we are done with questions. Um, if you have any other questions or we didn't get to your question, feel free to send an email to Mark, Carrie, myself, Joe, Alicia, any of us. And yeah. Pass it back to you, Mark.
Yeah, sounds good. Thanks. Thanks, everyone, for all the parts that you did and thanks for all the questions coming in. Lots of them, but it's good to, uh, to go through them, through them, cause it helps us on our end as well. So by the looks of it, that is all the questions that have come in and that is it. So have a great evening, everyone, and thanks again for spending this time with us.